Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September ninth, twenty twenty five Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly meeting, both live in council chambers here as well as on the Zoom platform. And we're glad you have joined us for this meeting tonight. During public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually. A member of our staff will unmute your microphone on the Zoom platform and announce your name. You'll then be able to make comment to council and the public. We will start with members when we do our public comments, we'll start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us and then move to those joining us remotely. We have two public comment periods on tonight's agenda, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. So with that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. We can start with the roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Cármenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirkner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Manager here, assistant here, chief is here, solicitor will be here. You have a quorum. Thank you very much. With that, we will open the first round of public comment. We do ask the members of the public making comment to step up to the podium. There is a sign in sheet for the purpose of the minutes. It helps if you put down your name and address. And then when you address council, if you can just state your name and whether you're a business owner, resident or residents of the borough. So any members of the public wish you may comment on any items on tonight's agenda or generally speaking, please? Somebody had to be first.
John McPhee, Business Manager and co-owner of Diving Cat Studio Gallery on Bridge Street. And for some of council, you may know that previous to that, I represented Phoenix Property Group, which acquired the Steel Company property in the mid nineties. In nineteen ninety eight and nineteen ninety nine, I spent the better part of two years overseeing the demolition of the buildings on the western portion of the site. That was approximately six hundred thousand square feet of buildings in Shop Six and the mill itself. Back in nineteen ninety nine, I actually moved to the borough and resided here for the next decade. At the time of the demolition of the steel mill and into the early two thousands, it was rare to see very many people on Bridge Street. And after dark, you didn't necessarily feel safe. It's an amazing transformation which has taken place. The Inside Out on the weekends has been a boom for our business. I routinely set up a tent out in front of the gallery, which provides me the opportunity to really interact with people that are out on the street. I see countless people walking their dogs, families, kids with scooters. I am astonished at the number of strollers that I see going up and down the street. In addition, I have several friends that are wheelchair bound, and they talk about how convenient it is on the weekend that they can maneuver their wheelchairs down the center of the street and not worry about tables, chairs, and bricks on the sidewalks. Along that line, I've heard numerous people, literally, we have thousands of new people that live in the downtown area with the development of the Steel Company property. And in that process, they are using the Inside Out and coming down. I've had people call it the Inside Out, they're the public space and the market square for the community. At this time, you're going to be considering on the agenda the creation of a park space at Main and Bridge. You all know the results of your own parking study and what that has led you to conclude. I had the privilege of being on the committee of hiring the consultants that designed that. And we at Diving Cat Studio are in full support of the creation of that. Inside Out provides a public space in the downtown for about sixty days of the year. This would create an opportunity three hundred and sixty-five days a year. There are lots of community parks that are neighborhood parks around the borough, but there is nothing in the immediate area of the downtown for all the thousands of people that have moved to the downtown of Phoenixville. I hope that council will move forward with it. Certainly, the opportunity to receive state and federal funding goes to those that have construction-ready projects. I hope that you will support it and move forward. We strongly support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Hi, everyone. My name is Zach Hoffman. I am the owner of Bistro on Bridge, two twelve Bridge Street in Phoenixville. I'm unable to put it any more eloquently than John did regarding the Inside Out and our experience and feelings about that and what it does for the town and for the community and the conversations I have with people from other communities and other townships as far as their time coming into Phoenixville. The enjoyment the kids have from the morning and the strollers and the and the running and the exercise and the coffee shops to lunch crowds, to the events, to dinnertime, to families playing cornhole on the two hundred block. It really is a pretty cool transformation that came from a tough time of COVID and I'm glad that Phoenixville continues to move forward with that. A motion today that is in front of council is the Square at Bridge and Main. And in addition to John, I'm in full support of Bistro on Bridge of this motion and council supporting it. To have a space where families can gather, you know, kids can run around year round, all their ice cream shops, all the coffee shops, morning yoga, just countless things that this town offers. And the growth that it has seen to have a central meeting space in place would really continue to drive this town further. My family and I, we go to King of Prussia, and they have a similar situation there. And we go there because we can go to dinner, we can go shopping, we can go get ice cream, kids can play on rocks, they can run around, we can enjoy live music in a safe space that is meant for the enjoyment of relaxing and reading a book or enjoying ice cream with their family. And this Maiden and Bridge project, just in my mind, and it sounds like other Realtor retailers, just makes a lot of sense for the community. Yeah. So Bistro is in full support of that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
My name is Sally Moritz. I am a resident of Phoenixville on First Avenue. And I actually have a different perspective on the park. That lot is always full. I walked past it tonight and all thirty-five spaces were full. I have come downtown planning just to pick up takeout, not able to find a parking space anywhere. When there are events, that lot is used for all kinds of setup of things. So when we have First Fridays and the weekends, that space is available to use then. But the other days, there's definitely a parking shortage in town. And if we take away thirty-five spaces, where will those parking spaces be made up? We see more and more parking coming up to the residential areas as far as First or Second Avenue. And it just seems like we're taking away a resource that may actually, once that's gone, may actually be a deterrent to people coming downtown when there aren't special events, but people just want to come downtown for dinner on a weeknight.
Thank you, Sally.
Hi, my name is Sarah Howell. I am a resident and I am very much in support of the redevelopment of the parking lot. The sociologist Ray Oldenburg says that third places are very important to our well-being, and it's something that we're really lacking right now. Third places are the living rooms of our communities, is what he says. And we need a place that we can go and gather that doesn't cost money, that doesn't require anything extra of us to be together. And I just love this. I love the bathrooms, I love the water fountains, I love the tables and the stages and all the different ways that it allows all of us that just love this town and love being a part of what gets to happen in downtown Phoenixville, that this just adds to that. Very much in support of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening. My name is Craig Moritz, and I am a happy resident of Phoenixville for the last fifteen years. I must say that I'm completely amazed at the results of the redevelopment downtown and the work that has been done to make it a more comfortable and livable place. One of the things that impresses me is how much park space and public area and trails and other things we have now. And it seems to me that that particular parking lot at Bridge and Main gives the city the best of both worlds. There's space there that can be used for, and I've seen it used and and shared that for a number of special events downtown. It certainly, it seems that the city has dibs on that space now. So when, when anything of that nature happens, whenever there is that need to come together and have a public space, that that's open and very available. But, you know, there's also a consideration too of what do you do Monday through Friday until three P M? And at that time, we're making money selling parking. Seems to me that those revenues would be missed. In addition, we're looking at spending, what was it, three million dollars? On the park? Well, I didn't see the proposal, but I'd like to. What are they going to put there for three million dollars? That's my question. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Craig. There's nobody else in the council chambers at the moment, then we'll move over to our Zoom platform. Ms. Logan can queue them up.
Patrick, I turned on your microphone.
Can I, am I coming in loud and clear?
Yes.
All right. My name is Patrick Soodle, longtime listener, first time caller. I'm a resident here at three eight zero four Elendown. I am here to express my support for the proposed park at Bridge and Main. The deed is clear. The land was given to Phoenixville for open space and public recreation, not for permit parking. Residents have said they want more green space downtown, a place for families, performance, fitness classes, and community gatherings. And this proposed park aligns with the Phoenixville Borough Comprehensive Plan. Inside Out, busiest time of year, this lot is already closed and inaccessible. A park here will strain our downtown, lose local businesses, as we've seen every year or tonight, and create that kind of public space that inspires pride and brings people together. I also have a personal anecdote. I moved to Phoenixville in two thousand and nineteen, and for the past sixty years, not only has it become home, but it's become part of my identity. I convinced my fiance, who was a Jersey girl, to move to Phoenixville, and she fell in love with it as much as I did. She joined the B First Dance Company, and will be performing in her very first Phoenixville Christmas Spectacular. I told her I loved her for the first time on Bridge Street, and we're planning to get married in the Foundry. So I believe this proposed park can be an impetus for all the memories I was privileged to experience for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Dory, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. Hi, Borough Council. My name's Dory Sawyer. I live on the north side of Phoenixville, right on Franklin Avenue. I am frequently down on Bridge Street, especially when the street is closed during Inside Out. I love all of our businesses and restaurants. And I think that when we are talking about parking, a lot of people bring up people coming to visit Phoenixville. But I think that this park really gives a place for residents to go. Not that I feel we've been overlooked, but I feel like we also deserve a nice space to go to on a Wednesday afternoon when it's really nice and we can take our laptops and get some work done in a park, maybe. I have followed the proposals and the grant applications, and I've also seen the deed online. And it does seem like the the former resident who gifted this land to the borough wanted it to be for a recreational space. So I think that we should honor the intention behind the gift, create a nice space for residents, and keep our community beautiful and green for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dory.
Katie, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, my name is Katie Ortiz, and I'm a resident of Phoenixville. I'd like to voice my support for the Phoenixville Square. The lot is utilized as a public space so frequently, and it frankly has so little impact as a parking lot. Since it's so small, this feels like a very natural transformation to make. The location as a parking lot also makes it unsafe for pedestrians and drivers as people move in and out. But the location is ideal for a community area, as we know from the Christmas tree, from Blob Fest and First Friday events. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback about it when I mention it to my friends and family. I understand that parking is a concern, especially as someone who used to live in an apartment with only street parking, just one block away from Bridge Street. It was not fun with groceries. However, the reason why so many people want to come and enjoy our town is because we build up attractions like the Square and we prioritize walkability and community over cars. So like my neighbor Patrick, I'm also a girl from New Jersey, and I was converted, fell in love with this town because of all the things that there are to do here. And like my neighbor Dory said, third places encourage people from out of town to come here when they see residents feel safe and comfortable here. Now, I would like to note, however, that as we build up Phoenixville's community areas, there are also things that we can do to improve accessibility. My main concern is possibly adding additional handicap parking spots that are available even when Bridge and Main Street are shut down. And based on the improvements I've seen around town right now, I feel confident that handicap accessibility is as much a priority to the council as it is to me. I work on Bridge Street, and we have a regular that uses a wheelchair and often mentions the difficulties he has with parking close enough to reasonably get downtown. I'd also suggest possible other solutions to the parking dilemma, such as short-term parking, like fifteen, thirty-minute parking. So if you need to get your takeout or get cat litter from Matty's Castle, you don't need to compete with people who are there to have a sit-down dinner or see a movie. Another option would be shuttles around town. There are plenty of people who live in the corners of Phoenixville and are really close. It's just not walkable to them in the way that it is for me. I'm very fortunate that I can walk and bike down here. I love using the bike racks and all the new ramps on the sidewalks, but that's just not an option for some people. So the more opportunity we have for public transportation, the more other people can come down, enjoy the town that they live in, and free up parking spaces for people who live further away. So overall, I'd like to voice my support for the Square, and I look forward to seeing the positive impact it makes on our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else on the Zoom platform. Was there anybody else in council chambers tonight that wanted to take a moment for public comment at the first round here? Again, we will have a we will have one more coming online on Zoom. But again, if anybody else in the chamber.
Paige, I've turned on your microphone.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, I'm Paige G. V. I'm a resident of Phoenixville. My husband and I spend a lot of time downtown. And we do often wish that we had seating and green spaces so we could spend more time there. I support the proposed park. I've been following the plans for months. I think they're fantastic. This space is already utilized at major events that bring a lot of people into Phoenixville and a lot of businesses in Phoenixville, like Blob Fest and Pride. We've attended all of them. It would be nice if that area was built up and more functional, because right now it's just concrete, and the parking lot isn't even functional for most of these large events that I mentioned, which is when parking is most essential and when people seem to complain about it the most. We've always been able to find parking, even if it means walking more, parking a bit further. Obviously, that doesn't apply to those of accessibility needs, but a gathering spaces need downtown more so than parking. And more green spaces would benefit the community and encourage people to spend more time and money downtown. We really do love Phoenixville, and I wholeheartedly believe that this would be a fantastic addition to the community. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paige. Okay, with that, I don't see anybody else on Zoom platform at the moment. Is that correct, Ms. Logan?
That is correct, Mr. Ewald.
Okay. Then anybody else in council chambers tonight? If not, we do have another round of public participation towards the end of the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the first round of public participation. On tonight's agenda, we do not have any presentations listed, so our first item for council action is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items under lengthy consent agenda that anybody on council is looking to clarify or withdraw for further comment later in the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Certainly. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And that takes us to Section Six, which is Communications Council Participation for Updates from Council Members for any Resident Interactions or Events Coming Up or Things, accolades for Staff or Events. Okay. We've another section if anything comes to mind later in the agenda. With that, we'll move over to the Mayor's Report. Mayor Schler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to all of those of you who have joined us here in person and those who are joining us virtually. My favorite thing so far has been the, I've listened in many times, but my first time calling in. So thank you so much for calling in, and we would encourage everyone. Certainly, I think the amazing thing about this space and about this community is our ability to come together in a spirit of respect and dignity and to share our thoughts and ideas and suggestions with one another. And so thank you all for doing that in such a wonderful and a positive manner. So thank you all very much. I want a couple of things that have happened and then a couple of things that are coming up. This is a long list, I apologize. But a lot of exciting things going on in our Phoenixville community. First, we want to start off with a congratulations to Louis Lieberman and his team from Rivertown Taps right over here in historic downtown. Last month, they opened the Contessa in Pottstown. So a shout out to Pottstown for getting an exciting Phoenixville restaurant tour. So we just want to congratulate Louis and his team. On eight twenty-four, on August twenty-fourth, the PMYC held their first Community Day in conjunction with all of the youth sports leagues, which include the Phoenixville Area Soccer Club, our Little League, and also Future Phantoms, an extraordinary event right before school started. And actually, our own James, our own Borough Council Member was actually very involved in that. So an incredible event held in Charlestown Park that helped to really highlight all the youth sports that take place in the Phoenixville region. On the twenty-fifth of August, Harris Hill had their ribbon cutting. And so a very special congratulations to East Pike Lins Community, as well as the Phoenixville Area School District for the opening of the new school. Also, we just want to welcome all of the new teachers who have joined the Phoenixville Area School District and also wish all of our incredible students luck as they come back to the Phoenixville Area School District to Holy Family as well as Renaissance Academy. So thank you to all of our students as they start their new year. On the twenty-ninth of August, it was International Overdose Awareness Day, and we want to give a special shout out and thank you to Proactive Chester County, along with the Phoenixville Police Department, who had an overdose awareness table set up at Steel City where they distributed information as well as Narcan to members of the community. So just something important to think about in our community for anyone who may be struggling with overdose or who may be struggling with any type of addiction or usage. We do have resources in our community and in our county to help you. On today, nine nine, a special shout out and thank you for the Hometown Heroes Event, which was the nine eleven memorial put on by the Phoenixville, East Pike Lins, and Schuylkill Township Republican Committees. And that just took place at Grace Bible Church today. So that event specifically to honor and remember those who lost their lives in nine eleven, but also to honor our hometown heroes, our Phoenixville Police and our regional Phoenixville, East Pike Lins, and Schuylkill Police EMS and Fire Departments. Coming up this Saturday, get ready because it's going to be exciting. We have Greenville, which is going to be taking place right underneath the Gay Street Bridge. That is put on by the Phoenixville Green Team and a number of community programs and organizers who are specifically focused on environmental concerns. We have Wolf Jam, which will be taking place at Reeves Park. That's for all of our dog lovers. And we have Andre Thornton Day to honor, of course, our hometown, one of our hometown heroes, Andre Thornton, and that will be in Andre Thornton Park. On the twentieth of September, we have the Mrs. Roper Romper. We have been told this is the largest in the nation. And Kelly Ripa, we are really sad that you decided to attend another one and not the best one that exists. But thank you for giving us a shout out on your show. Also, on nine twenty, there will be there will be a bingo. There are money events that will be taking place in conjunction with the Roper Romper. A lot of fun events taking place from noon onward. And a large picture for anyone who is dressed as Helen or Stanley or any of the Three's Company characters, there is a big picture that will take place right in the middle of town at six P M. On nine twenty-one, the Sir Optimist Club of Phoenixville will be hosting their bingo, their annual bingo at the Kimberton Fire Hall. You can check that out on their Facebook or their website. On the twenty-fifth of September, the Rotary Club of Phoenixville will celebrate one hundred years of service at their hundredth anniversary gala. On nine twenty-eight, September twenty-eighth, the Phoenixville Free Clinic will hold their Field Day. If anyone is interested in participating in Field Day activities, like balancing an egg or running with a sponge, you can do that to help support the Phoenixville Free Clinic. It is one of only two free clinics in Chester County which supports uninsured individuals. And so thank you to the Phoenixville Free Clinic for that great work. Also, that night will be Citizen Advocacy will be hosting their spaghetti dinner. Citizen Advocacy, of course, ensures that everyone in our community has somebody to support them as well as to advocate for them. And so thank you to our friends at Citizen Advocacy. On October fourth and fifth, Yager's Farm in East Pike Lins will be hosting their Fall Fest, a fun family activity. Many of you know them, of course, for their Christmas trees, but they do other fun fall-related activities as well as have a farm stand. On the ninth of October, Church Housing Corporation, for those of you who know St. Peter's Place, the Episcopal House, the organization that actually runs those incredible affordable housing programs will turn forty, and they will celebrate their fortieth anniversary. And then I last, but certainly not least, on the eleventh of October, will be Blocktoberfest at St. Peter's Episcopal Church, and that is also World Migratory Bird Day. And so they will be having a special presentation taking place at St. Peter's on how we can create shared spaces for birds within our cities. So thank you all so much again. Thank you for being part of this extraordinary community, and thank you for always coming together and showing up for Phoenixville.
Thank you, Mayor. One item I failed to mention at the very beginning, just prior to tonight's meeting, Borough Council did hold an executive session. Matters discussed were matters of personnel related to the hiring of a new police officer, matters of real estate related to fifteen Water Street, matters of personnel related to the ASME negotiations, matters of attorney-client privileged communication related to potential conflicts, and lastly, matters of attorney-client privileged matters related to four hundred Taylor Street. So those. oh boy, all right, we're going to go back to the mayor for one more comment.
I apologize, last comment. We also do want to thank Jason Kelsey and the team at Garage Beer, who actually used Phoenixville for the premiere of the Garage Beer Short Movie at our historic Colonial Theater. So very exciting, certainly, to see our Colonial Theater used for so many different things, including the launch of Garage Beer Short Movie. So thank you so much to Jason Kelsey and to everyone who was able to support and come out for that.
All right. With that, we'll move on to appointments. We do not currently have any vacancies on any of our boards, committees or commissions, but we do have upcoming renewals. Throughout the year on each of our boards and committees, we do ask members of the public who are willing to lend their talents to any of these boards, committees or commissions to reach out to their council people. We will tell you how easy it is to apply and all the requirements, all the expectations of each position. Most of them meet one month, one day a month or less. And pretty much everybody has a skill that the one of these boards, committees or commissions would be valued on. So again, nothing at the moment, but if anybody's looking for volunteer opportunities, we are always looking for volunteers. That takes us to section nine of tonight's agenda, which is new business. Our first item tonight is a motion to reject all requests for proposals received for Arbor's Consulting Services.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Saying that, we have a motion to accept staff recommendation to award the twenty twenty-six chemical bids.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Strenfell. Any questions on this motion? Anything from staff needed on this motion? Pretty straightforward, our annual chemical bid rewards. Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And next up, we have a motion to authorize a conditional offer of employment for patrol officer pending satisfactory completion of medical examination and psychological testing.
So moved?
Do you like to name the name?
Yes, I believe that that
Full motion, sorry.
Yeah, so I'll make a full, the full motion to authorize a conditional offer of employment to Kyle Berry pending satisfactory completion of medical examination and psychological testing.
Perfect.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Strenfell. Any questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I believe that will take us back to full complement. Exciting. And lastly, under new business, we have a motion to award the design and engineering of Square at Bridge and Main Street to ground reconsidered in the amount totaling three hundred thousand, three hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. And questions on this motion? Ms. Dugan? Still need the mic?
Please forget about the mic. It's just like I have a pretty loud voice to begin with, so I kind of forget.
They conceal well, too.
Yeah. All right, well, this is obviously the beginning of our project to change, to take away that parking lot. And this is for, we have, the original cost was seventy-eight thousand for the first swing at it. Now I guess is this is the the final design of it. And then we discussed it finance last week, two weeks ago. How you know, the whole project is going to end up costing a good amount of money and I just feel like I don't, I don't feel like we vetted this completely with, like, I appreciate that people came out with their opinions of it. I did have a, a letter in the paper to make people more aware of the situation and that's what I definitely wanted to do. I was hoping to have people be prepared for it, not just be surprised with it. But I just, I'm still not in support of anything going forward in this area because I just feel like this is a major parking lot that people use to stop by places. There was some, there was a comment before just to pick up takeout or something. I know people who have tried to get pizzas delivered have problems with that, especially during the weekends when the summer when we close all of the roads. But now we're just going to make it impossible for anybody to get there if you don't walk well. And I'm concerned about that situation because frankly, it affects me too. So, so I don't visit the downtown when they close the roads because I can't find a place to park to get in downtown to do anything. I can't go and get the chocolates or the, yeah, I can't, I can't make it over there. So, yeah, I will definitely be voting no on this.
Understood. Thank you, Ms. Dugan. And certainly viable concerns that we hope to address, I think, so.
Yeah.
We'll start with Mr. Moore.
If I may, thanks, Mark. So I kind of did, did a division because I'm, I'm I'm undecided. When this was in front of the ITTS, I voted against it for a number of reasons, but I really liked the concept. So my objections include, first, the loss of income to the parking department. I'll just make a note, we're, I was trying to get an actual dollar amount from a year, but it's a little bit difficult, but that lot in May of this year had one thousand seven hundred and forty-two parking sessions on. I'm not sure what the dollar amount at that yields for across a month, but that's a lot of sessions. April, when there was no weekend closure, had two thousand three hundred and thirty-one sessions. We get this data. And that's just the passport parking data, which is probably a significant percentage of the total. But not the one hundred percent people pay other ways besides passport. So that's a real concern. I understand that our parking study has generated, has demonstrate, specifically spoke to the fact that the question of could we close and still provide sufficient parking? Their study said yes for a variety of reasons, including counting, you know, we're going to be adding a lot of parking spaces down in Steel Point. It also is dependent upon Holy Ghost always providing parking. I mean, they counted those spaces and we have no permanent knowledge as to whether Holy Ghost will not do something else with their land. So I have always been concerned about that. So that's on my why not list, that's the first one. I'm unclear as to the loss of income. Second, if I could get some clarification, what does the three hundred and five thousand get us to? And why do we need to do it? Because as I understand and it has been described to me, we will actually proceed to go get as many great grants and we're so good at that to pay for the ultimate multi-million dollar cost of this. Why do we need to spend three hundred and five thousand at this point in order to go for the grant? I don't know if Mr. Crack wants to speak to that or.
Yeah, if, if you want to jump in on the sort of what's been budgeted, what's been received.
So one of the things that makes us very, very, very competitive and we are and have been very competitive is that council, as long as I've been here, which is seventeen years, has afforded staff the opportunity to fund and move forward with design and engineering of all of its projects. With that information, we are then able to go to the funders with a reasonable expectation of what it's going to cost to do a particular project. That's our road projects, that's our park projects, that's this building, anything that we've done. We've done the design and engineering in advance of that. That cost is also part of the match of any grants that we are able to get. So that's the the side benefit of that is we're able to use that as part of the match requirements. The three hundred and two thousand dollars, you asked what that is for? That is for the design and engineering. There's a lot of detail underground with a lot of utilities coming down Main Street and coming across Bridge Street. It has to be understood with the traffic signals, Comcast, Verizon, Pico Gas, Pico Electric. All that has to be totally understood and a lot of it is in the sidewalk area. And then on top of that, if you've ever looked at that parking lot, it is not a flat lot. There is a, at least a thirty-six inch grade change from the southwest corner to the northeast corner across that parking lot. That's going to require some extensive underground work as it relates to stormwater management. So we have to deal with all of those things to make that park function the way it needs to function. So historically, council has always allowed the design and engineering to move forward. Traditionally, design and engineering is about fourteen, fifteen percent of the cost of construction. In this case, the design and engineering is ten percent of the cost of construction.
Yeah, because I noticed, I dug through years back, some of the plans and so forth. There was a plan dated two thousand eight, Mr. Kirchner would be the only one and used to crack for what's now Veterans Park to be our primary, you know, recreation center, whole building. It was a whole vision, eighty-some pages, had a breakdown of estimates, but I, I guess, I don't even know whether that that study was the design and engineering or whether that was just like a concept plan. I guess it really wasn't. So are you saying that this three hundred and two thousand will give us shovel-ready or close to shovel-ready?
The, the intent is to get us into the position of a shovel-ready project that's designed and engineered. I'll use, right now, we have a shovel-ready project that has been designed and engineered. We still don't have funding for it, but the Fillmore Street straightening out, that's a typical project, Maori Road. We had to design and engineering on hold for almost four, four and a half years. It takes a long time to get the, the grant funding. That's why we try to get these things taken care of. So we were cognizant of what the funder is looking for and we're able to show that funder the return on investment of having a project that when they say you've got the grant, they know that it's going to get done. And that's where Phoenixville gets extremely competitive is our projects are always ready to go.
Right. Two other thoughts to Ms. Dugan's point, that I have concerns about losing this lot where it is. It's where it is. Accessibility and convenience. To a certain extent, and I have interactions too with people who aren't here tonight. I'm often at Episcopal House working Election Day. And I ask particularly some of our seniors, you know, do you go downtown? Or other people I encounter. No, I, you know, I, I can't get down there. And they don't say it sometimes, but they often imply that they want to drive down and park and they don't get to. And I've been thinking through this point. We're sort of saying, because we're so forward-thinking and about the idea of being walkable, we're kind of saying to people, you should really only come downtown if you can walk here or ride a bike here or a scooter, you know. You, to complain about not having parking is kind of not getting what we're doing down here. And I, I feel like that's telling, and I'm just saying this to my colleagues, that's telling a whole bunch of people who live in the borough or outside the borough that it's almost, we're not saying it this way, but it almost implies that they're not welcome. And I, I, I'm starting to have a real problem with like you're not welcome. It's almost implied. The other objection I have is that if we were doing this when we needed to revive the town, which was kind of the reason that the land was donated, that would make sense to kind of put this central element. But we've already done the appeal to the town that we wanted to do and have been wanting to do and that two, you know, two of our plans have been driving. And now we have, this is like a capstone versus a you know, a further driver. I know there's some people who are saying, oh, this will even more drive the enthusiasm to come downtown. But it's, it feels, it feels like a luxury. And, you know, we've got a lot of luxury in this town now. It's what we've been trying to get. But I'm starting to get really uncomfortable with the fact that the only things that are getting built in this town cost five hundred thousand dollars and they're townhouses. And this feels like we are trying to invest in something that appeals to that demographic versus the rest of the people. So those are my objections that are what I've been mulling since we've been talking about this. On the other hand, why do two do it? The first question is, and I am still unclear in this, and I'd like to hear from the solicitor. When was, what is the actual deed and when was it given? I'm still unclear as to the history and to what we are legally obligated to do at this point or have been since we got the land.
So you're, you're challenging my memory, but luckily, Mr. Crack has a copy. But I do believe, and I'm trying to quickly find it here, that the deed was provided for recreational purposes. Yeah, so the covenants running with the land include, but are not limited to the following. Real estate conveyed herein shall be used only as open space in the form of land for public recreational purposes.
So then we have been in violation and we, the council have been in violation. And it was given to, I'm not even sure when. Was given to us when?
Nineteen eighty-six.
So forty-some years we've been basically have ignored what we were told, what we were given the land to do. Now, there were a lot of justifications I've heard. I wasn't here, I've only been here during the good years. But I've heard how rough it was after the plant closed. And having a parking lot helped with the downtown revival right there because that's the accessibility and convenience. But we were given this land and I, I've had thoughts about the fact that we could also receive gifts from other people. We received a gift for the MDM Preserve. What if we ignored that or sold it? You know, what recourse would the grantor have to compel us to not do that? If we build a park, as they told us we were supposed to do, then that won't happen. I mean, suppose somebody wants to come along by the main state and then buy the land from us and put up a real nice-sized hotel, which is a lot of people are asking for. That could happen if we're not if we don't do what we were instructed to do. The notion of a central meeting space is something that, you know, I think is pretty interesting. I mean, everything I've heard and everything I feel, and I've always been supportive of the, of Phoenixville Inside Out, this would be a capstone to that. Which is really good. And, and then, you know, this was brainstormed and concept with downtown merchants contributing their thinking. Also, the interesting that, so it's like a proven concept. We've already proven that having a closed space downtown generates not only, you know, traffic, people coming here, but generates community. That I feel too. That's why I was always been supportive of it. You can be there and you can feel like people are just happy to be with each other and meeting strangers, meeting friends, meeting neighbors. This space would add to that. I know Dana, you talked in your op-ed that we have we have the new park, Hart, I keep forgetting its full name. Hartwood, thank you. And that's, that is a great space and it gets used that way. So those are my ups and downs and talking it through. I wish I knew the loss of the income because I realize we're already, and the parking study tells us that we're we're not losing that much revenue and we are gaining revenue from other parking spots. So it's not like we're suddenly going to have a hole. So it's not like we're suddenly going to have a hole. But I, I wish I knew that number, but we don't have it and we have to talk about it tonight. Those are my concerns, I wanted to share it with everyone and I'm not going to say what my decision is yet. I just thought I'd share them and see if there's anyone who wants to speak to any of the points I made.
Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss.
So I have spent quite a bit of time, and forgive my voice, I'm kind of losing my voice and I might get decidedly worse as this goes, but I have spent a lot of time considering this. I have a healthy amount of notes here and rather than cave to the temptation of dueling op-eds in the local newspaper, I thought it most appropriate to share them here. So I'm going to try to keep my comments mostly to facts and try to veer away from conjecture or opinion, but really anchoring to things that are researched, studied or part of published articles, et cetera. So the first piece is kind of that we already have sufficient parking. So since two thousand seventeen, according to our parking study, the borough has added nine hundred and seventy-five parking spaces in the downtown right now. And that's a hundred and seventeen at Smithworks, fifty at Wheatland, forty-seven at the new Church Street Parking Lot or the newer Church, Church Street Parking Lot. Then we're talking about taking away thirty-six. So just for an order of magnitude, thirty-six parking spots that may go away, a thousand that have been added in the last eight years or so. The new Church Street Parking Lot, as I mentioned, is one block away from where this is with forty-seven spaces, which more than would replace what would be removed. And then peak parking utilization in the downtown is only fifty-three percent on weekdays. Meaning nearly half of all the parking spots remain empty even during the busiest Thursday evening hours. All of those are from our parking study. To Mr. Moore's concern about loss of revenue that we would gain from this parking lot, I would posit, and this is getting a little bit into opinion, but I would posit that people that can't park there aren't going to leave town, they're going to park somewhere else. And as just stated, we've provided ample additional parking spaces relatively close. The Smithworks Parking Lot has, according to our parking study, ninety-four to a hundred and seventeen empty spaces during our peak times. So less than a five-minute walk, this lot is virtually empty, seeing one to three percent utilization on weekdays in particular, a little more on weekends, but still wildly underutilized and rarely filled. Even on the busiest Saturday nights, as part of our study, it found that there were something like, I think the number they used specifically was two hundred and sixty-three plus total spaces available downtown. So the crisis of parking that we have in Phoenixville, to me, seems much more about convenience than it is about availability. People want convenient parking that's free, not just parking. Getting into what a park would create versus a parking lot, I think a park creates things that a parking lot just cannot. There's no shortage of people looking for and demanding green space in their lives, protection for existing green spaces and expansion to those, community gathering areas. We see that we are a community that wants to gather and wants to be together and thrives when we are. And quality of life improvements, right? Places to stop while you're downtown, places to take a break downtown in between stops, not just a place to park. Parking lots don't build communities, but parks definitely do. And that may veer on the side of opinion versus fact, but I'll say it nonetheless with that caveat. In terms of economic benefits, which Mr. Moore, you raised and I think others have raised as well, parking lots don't generate a lot of revenue. In general, they barely cover their own costs of upkeeping the parking and checking on whether people are parking. But a vibrant public space that is likely to draw more visitors increases property value and in study after study, it can be shown to boost adjacent business activity. I'll skip my next few points in the interest of time and thank you all for following me on this journey. Talking about walkability and what a park would add to walkability within the downtown, I found three studies and I'd be happy to send them to anybody that would like them, that all point to the fact that pedestrians spend more money downtown than drivers. So while drivers might make larger individual purposes because they can carry things in cars, et cetera, pedestrians visit more frequently. And the studies that I was looking at show that merchants consistently overestimate how many of their customers come by car versus walk. Walkable downtowns and towns that have spaces to stop while walking support two to three times more businesses per acre than car-oriented strips and strip malls. Small, unique businesses, kind of the soul of a downtown like ours thrive on foot traffic, not on parking spaces. I think other studies that I found pointed to parking killing the vitality that it's purported to or claim to preserve. So there's something called a thirty percent rule where research shows that in healthy downtowns, about thirty percent of parking spaces should be available at any time. That's really a healthy target. Our study showed that that was forty-seven to fifty percent availability on weekdays. So the study showed that we were especially on weekdays overparked or had more parking than we needed to and we're outside of that optimal range. Kind of the last pieces that I'll, I'll, I'll share. There's a stickiness factor for when people are walking to towns versus, or commuting in ways other than cars. But non-drivers tend to stick around downtown for two to three hours, whereas car-oriented areas and car-oriented destinations are more twenty to thirty-minute visits. So that speaks to a lot of the conversations that we've had about building community, seeing your neighbors, but also the economic activity that comes to it. I think something like this could turn many people's visits to Phoenixville from a single stop where they'll stop in front of the restaurant they want to go to or the store they want to go to, maybe with maximal convenience, but then they'll leave conveniently right after that, rather than stopping at two or three spots within the town and kind of spreading their money, their attention and their time throughout the town. There are a couple really key success stories that came up a couple of times that I would encourage anybody that still has doubts about this to look into. But Boulder Colorado converted parking to their Pearl Street Mall with wild success. The Church Street Marketplace in Burlington, Vermont is another one that I, that came up a lot. Then in Greenville, South Carolina, removed parking lots for its Falls Park, which by some measures sparked roughly a billion dollars in investment in Greenville, South Carolina. That's not exactly Phoenixville, but I think there are some parallels. I'll just close with saying that I don't think any downtown has ever thrived by adding more parking. I don't think parking is necessarily an ingredient in a thriving town. Sure, we want to have, we don't want to be at either extreme on this, but I think if we have the opportunity to bias towards green space and promoting walkability and additional convenient parking, I'd aim for that, that walkable town. Cities that have really prioritized parking, Detroit, Hartford, Tulsa, have all hollowed out their cores and are shells of the towns that they once were. And they are perfect examples of what happens when you place too much focus on parking and not enough focus on the other things that build community. You know, the, the note that I had here was the more parking provided, the less vital a downtown becomes and the more transactional it becomes. I have more and I'd be happy to share that with anybody at any time, but my voice is suffering. I think I've spoken enough. I think I addressed some of the points, Brian, that I think you were bringing up and I wanted to make sure it got airtime, so I will pause there.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Berkeley.
So obviously I have a unique experience living in the downtown or presenting the downtown. I have the luxury for the last thirteen years of being able to walk from First Avenue to get my takeout, being able to park my car if I don't have somewhere to be, you know, over the weekend that takes me out of the downtown and park to everything, meetings, to visit friends, to go downtown, to enjoy, you know, different businesses or activities. So I am very, very blessed and fortunate that I've been able to stay in that proximity. And certainly I've seen how our town has changed and I've seen what, I've been very entrenched. Obviously, I sit up here with all of you and the parking that we've added. Thank you for all those, those data and points from both Mr. Moore and Mr. Weiss to speak really specifically on, okay, what, what is the revenue loss? But we're adding parking here. There are spots that we're losing here, but look at all the spots we've, we've, we've added. I think the biggest thing is education, that's something that we talk about all the time, awareness and education. I actually have some friends on a text chain that are watching the meeting tonight about another issue and they were just enlightened by the whole process. And I think the more we can educate people on why we're doing this and how we're doing it and what, what the impacts are, the data that Mr. Weiss shared is very valuable to that. And not only has town changed, but society has changed. So a lot of people will say, okay, Phoenixville has changed, it's grown, it's wonderful, but we're excluding people now. Society is different. What people do as far as consuming business and small shops and purchasing things is very different than it was when I moved here twelve years ago. So town is different, but so is how consumers consume things. And I think if we don't make a draw to our downtown, then we are going to end up in that shell that Mr. Weiss talked about. We need to, again, I find it a little offensive that someone would say we're not welcoming people by considering these things, because in fact, we've talked about the fact that not only will foot traffic, love the data, bring in longer visits and people maybe making more stops, but those people who felt like, well, if I don't have the money to drive into town and spend on dinner, maybe I can't go into town, have expressed, well, if there was a park, I could maybe read my book and then inadvertently maybe they might stop and get a coffee or get a drink after or stop in a shop and make an impulse buy. So I think we just really have to think outside the box. I think all of the fears are valid, but when we look at the data, I think we can be less afraid of these things. And at the end of the day, I know I have other colleagues that have said the deed itself is the deal breaker for them. We need to be good stewards of what has been given to us. And if that's how it was given to us, that's what we need to do. That's our responsibility. And there might have been intended consequences. It sounds like in the eighties and nineties and early two thousands, we needed parking. I don't think anybody would have wanted a town square knowing what town looked like in those days from the stories. So again, we still have a responsibility and a commitment. If we commit to this, we have a responsibility to find funding in responsible ways through grants. And we have a responsibility to make sure we are continuing to be welcoming. We have opportunities that are accessible to all and that we're continuing to analyze and assess our handicap parking, accessible parking. It's great that we've added Church Street, that's a little steep for some folks. So again, I know that our staff and our parking staff, this is something we check in about all the time. I welcome you guys to talk to us about it or attend other meetings. We are checking in about where is there handicap parking when the street is closed? If this is then taken and repurposed into a park, where would other parking spots go? So we do have that responsibility with anything we do, any decision we make, we have commitment and responsibility. But this, I think we've done our homework and we have weighed out the negatives or what we're giving up. And I think we far exceeded what we're gaining and what we've added.
So I'll actually jump in here and then we'll go to Mr. Kirchner. And I'll circle back to myself, I'm sure, at some point. To piggyback on Mr. Weiss, there's, there's one comment I just wanted to add on with the parking statistics that you provided and something we haven't talked wildly about yet. But in addition to everything you had listed in terms of additional parking, the expectation is come spring, possibly in time for next year's street closure. If I push hard enough, we'll be adding an additional fifty parking spots at the lot at three ninety-five Bridge Street, which is four hundred feet to the, to the west of us here, just before Teaglumber. So I, I think it's valuable to continue to look at the areas that we've examined, the areas that we continue to add additional parking. And I think we've been creative and constructive to try to maximize the spaces that have higher value and the spaces that are, you know, more prone to parking being, being well-suited. So we are excited that, you know, sometime in two thousand twenty-six, we, we hope to open those fifty spots at three ninety-five Bridge. One of the items I think is very important to touch on that I think, I feel strongly about from the Parks and Rec end and the, the public health and safety is the idea of adding this additional public restroom. So currently, when we renovated the band shell at Reeves Park, that was the first time we installed hardline public restrooms that are available the majority of the day. This park design incorporates public accessible bathrooms for the first time downtown, which I think puts us far and ahead of, I, I don't know of any other, you know, many other communities that have an actual Main Street bathroom that's, that's available and, available and ADA-designed. And then lastly, for now, I just want to give a name to it because I had the, I had the luxury of getting to meet with her several times, but Neil Thorpe is the, the donor of this property and she was a powerhouse. So she only passed away in two thousand eighteen. If you haven't looked up her obituary, if you're interested in these things, she lived to the ripe age of ninety-eight. She was a huge enthusiast of both the Borough, Montclair. She was a longtime editor of the, the daily newspaper and she is the reason why we have the Lock Sixty Canal Park. But Neil was, she was an amazing powerhouse, an intelligent woman. And I think, you know, what she put in the, the documents for her deed were, were intentional and had the foresight of what she thought a town square could be for the borough. Although I agree, it probably wasn't, it may not have been the right time at the time. But things evolve and things change. And I think one of the things that we've been successful at and why, when most communities have a seven-year revitalization and they start to hit a slump, we've been fourteen, seventeen years into an upward trajectory that, that is pretty much unrivaled. So I do think that, that the, the Kaizen approach of always improving and always trying to find better things to do and, and reinventing ourselves has been one of the hallmarks as to why the borough is where it's at today. So I'll leave it there and continue around the horn here. Mr. Kirchner, you up next?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. If, if I could just back off on a couple of things, historically speaking. Mr. Moore, you brought up about Veterans Park, the, the plan for that. That was a conceptual plan that was really impractical because that is, that, that's basically Asheville there and you couldn't, I don't think you can put an outhouse on that. So, and the other thing is, I'd like to speak about the, the deed transferred. Bonnie August, who was president of council, signed that in nineteen eighty-six. I was here in nineteen eighty-six, not, not here and not there either. Actually, I, I'd moved on to other things beyond being a Phoenixville reporter at that time. But I, I remember why the merchants in this town got together to purchase that old, that, it was a W T Grants building, an old W T Grants apartment store. Some of you probably remember, some of you probably are looking at me like, what the hell? Is he talking about, like I'm talking about Bob Hope or something? But that was a small department store, closed in the mid nineteen seventies. It had been abandoned up until now, there've been various things in there, bingo, farmer's market, et cetera. But it, it had been struggling for about a decade. And then a group of merchants got together, bought the property, transferred it to the Phoenixville Area Economic Development Corporation, which then transferred it to the borough. Bonnie August was president of Borough Council, signed the deed in nineteen eighty-six. And it says, I, I saw the deed, it says for recreation, open space. But I don't want anybody to think that the borough back then took this under suspect, well, took it as recreation, open space and then turned it into a parking lot. It was always intended to be a parking lot. And that was language that was put into the, the deed transfer, I guess, to, to facilitate the transfer. But, you know, the, the borough did not do an untoward thing back in nineteen eighty-six when, and for the past thirty-nine years, as it's been a parking lot. That was what the merchants in the community who got together. That was what the merchants in the community who got together and acquired that property, that was their intent. And now, 39 years later, you know what? I can't, I can't argue that this is a bad idea to make a park there. Mr. Weiss, you raised a lot of good points. And I can't argue that there isn't enough parking to compensate for taking, if that parking lot goes away, there's plenty of parking. Now, there are two wheelchair accessible spaces in that lot that would go away. And there may be other accessible spaces in other parking lots, Church Street, down on Smithworks Boulevard. But that involves moving a wheelchair up or down a hill. And if you go down a hill, you got to go up to get to your car. If you go down the hill, or if you go up the hill, you got to go down. So I don't know how many of you have tried to push a wheelchair up or down a hill? I've done it, and it ain't an easy thing. So I have concerns about those two handicap wheelchair accessible spaces. But my big thing, and I brought this up, and this is why I voted against it, in finance, which is where we decide to spend money, how to spend it, is the cost. I mean, it's $300,000 just for the design and engineering. And then it's going, if it goes forward, that's a $3 million cost to build the park. That's a 20% Borough match, so that's another $600,000. It comes from the taxpayers of The Borough. And then the rest of it comes from the taxpayers of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, many of whom live in The Borough. So it's all taxpayer money. I can't get over the cost of it. We're looking at $3.3 million before this is all said and done. But like I said, you know, I can't say it's a bad idea. But the cost, we've done a lot in this town. The Phoenix Wheel, we're staffing up a fire department, we've made trail improvements. Fillmore Street, we have engineering done on that. But again, that's waiting for funding. So it's, sometimes I feel like I'm in the movie Everything Everywhere All at Once. We're trying to do everything everywhere, all at once, right now. And, I don't know, and that's what it comes down to. For me, it just comes down to the cost. So that's all I got to say, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Mr. Carmonito.
I don't have too much to add besides the fact that I'm in support of this for the reasons that, you know, we, that were discussed in our various meetings and what share with us tonight, fellow council members and the public. Thank you for showing up and sharing your opinions. I just, additionally, I just wanted to say, we started talking about this in March 2023, just so everybody knows. So we've been at this for two and a half years. And if this does come to fruition, it's probably like maybe three to four, five years till we have it done. And 10 years from now, I don't think anyone's going to look back, if it comes to what we hope it to be, anyone's going to look back and say, I really wish that was 35 parking spaces. We're going to love the park that we have designed together as a community and hoping that it comes together.
Thank you, Mr. Carmonito. Mr. Strenfeld.
I might as well jump in. I've never, I've never won this speak that much, but this, I'll be very quick. This is very easy for me. In the beginning, I was against it, didn't make sense to me. But, you know, after talking with staff, colleagues, you know, the one thing I'll never be able to get over is what was written in the deed. As an attorney, you know, that's, that's our job, and that's, that's the point, right, of a will. And for anybody that is considering donating or gifting land in the future, right, and, you know, to Mr. Kirchner's point, I'm not saying we did anything wrong or that, but, you know, I, as an attorney, I would like to see it, you know, fixed, followed, the wishes followed. And I think this is, you know, a good thing for the community. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions, comments, anything unanswered, Mr. Moore, or?
Thank you for asking. Mr. Kirchner did speak to the, you know, the geography is what it is because we're in a creek valley, and we got hills all the way down and up in just that one flat area that geography just gave us, or I don't know, maybe over time it expanded. And that's been my accessibility and convenience issues of it. I appreciate everyone else sharing, and Mr. Weiss in particular, and also Ms. Berkeley. So, but we can't change the geography. And so the only place we could put a really convenient parking lot is where it is right now. And that's, that's, I can't undo that. So I've said it all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And then to the one comment that was raised several times in terms of the parking spots for the ADA-designed parking spots. So this is something during the road closures, we've, we've worked to address with the parking department, and I think we've, we've worked well with the police department, we've worked well with the parking department, that there is the ability to more or less, I mean, with some preemption, but more or less on the fly, be able to monitor how many spots are being utilized, add additional spots when needed. And I think our parking department does an excellent job of relaying back to management that whether we had a partial utilization, you know, everything was maxed out and we need to add two more to each lot. But I think we have the eyes on the ground with our parking department, our police department and staff that are very cognizant and care a lot about this. So when, when we do max out on the available ADA spots, you know, there are temporary measures that can be taken that until we decide the permanent measures should be taken in terms of what, what spots should be permanently signed. So I do take that serious. A few years ago, I think it was just before COVID, one of our long-term residents and volunteers had mentioned that where the spots were located in that spot, in that parking lot were actually garbage for him. They, you know, he got out of his wheelchair van and it rolled. So we, you know, once that was brought to our attention, I know staff immediately reacted. They moved the spots to the most level corner to react to that, you know, immediate comment. So I think we have a very reactive staff that does care deeply about these issues. I think working with the police department, we've worked to add spots along Bridge Street that previously weren't there. And I think we can work to mitigate those concerns. So that's just, I'll leave that there. So. Okay. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-two. Up next on our agenda for Section 10, we have no public hearings, so we'll move on to resolutions and ordinances. Our first item for consideration tonight is a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the form, Police Department Ride Along Program Agreements, sorry, Formal Police Department Ride Along Program Agreements, and authorize the Chief of Police to utilize and implement such agreements.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion for the policy of the police ride along. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven-one, seven-zero with Mr. Strenfeld out of the room. Next up, under Resolutions and Ordnances, we have a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging John Ichter for his two years of service on the Historic and Architectural Review Board. So moved.
Suck it.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven-zero with Mr. Strenfeld out of the room. I will just take a moment to read the resolution into the record for the appreciation of his service. Resolution 2025-26, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Jonathan Ichter as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Board for The Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Jonathan Ichter served diligently and honorably as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Board since November 14th, 2023. And whereas Mr. Ichter provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Historical and Architectural Review Board and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to John Ichter for all of his efforts and commitment to The Borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past two years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of The Borough of Phoenixville that John Ichter is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you, John Ichter, also a former council person. With that, we'll move on to Item C. Under Resolutions and Ordnances, we need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the 2026 minimum municipal obligation for uniform firefighter and non-uniform pension plans.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the annual MMO contribution, a requirement of state law. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven-zero with Mr. Strenfeld out of the room. Item D tonight, we need a motion to adopt an ordinance changing the name and location of a borough street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, question by Ms. Berkeley, questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Next up, we need a motion to adopt an ordinance amendments, Chapter 15 of motor vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore, questions on our semi-regular updates to Chapter 15. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Next up, under Item F, we have, we need a motion to adopt an ordinance establishing the Borough of Phoenixville Firefighters Pension Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. And lastly, under tonight's ordinances and resolutions, we need a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment repealing and replacing Chapter 1 Administration and Government, Part 7 Pensions, Retirements, and Social Security. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Strenfeld, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. That concludes our resolutions and ordinances, which brings us to reports of committees, boards, and commissions, and we'll start with Harvard, with Ms. Dugan.
Everything was on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. We'll move to Mr. Moore with Planning Commission.
We had the previous August meeting, we did have a substantive discussion about the school lane project. No action was taken, it's still being worked on, so no action to report to council. The next meeting will be this week, September 11th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Kirchner with Regional Planning Committee.
Not much to report, Mr. President, but I just find this so fascinating. West Pike Land is going to have a referendum in November to vote on a 1.5 mil tax increase to fund the police force. Currently, their tax is 1.55 mils.
Wow.
So, so it would almost be doubling, but by comparison, our tax is like eight and a half mils, so. Just put it out there, but nothing else. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, coming up, we've got movie night under the stars, and that's at the Rec Center, at Patnadal Field on Saturday, September 27th. The Fall Fest and Chunk or Treat is coming up on October 25th from 12 to 3 at the Rec Center. The Parents Night Out is Friday, October 24th. There's one on November 21st and December 19th as well, from 5:30 to 8:30. The Schools Out Camps for Young Rembrandts, that'll be September 22nd and 23rd, and there's also one for the November 24th, 25th, and 26th. Youth co-ed sports camps at the Rec Center are September 22nd and 23rd, and also those November 24th, 25th, and 26 days. And there's also one for the Soul and Sky Mini Camp. Youth and family programs, that's the Basketball Training Academy starts, well, it starts September 10th to October 15th. And then there's the Wellness and Leadership Labs, that's September 20th, 27th, and October 11th and 18th. There are art classes with the young, for Young Rembrandts for ages one to three with caregiver participation, and that is at the Rec Center. Session one starts, has started September 6th to October 11th. Fun with Skyhawks, that is a neurodivergent athletics at Friendship Field or Patnadal Field, and that's Sundays, the September 7th to the 28th. And then there's Jump Start Fall T-Ball, that's coming up September 6th to the October 11th. Beginner Skateboarding Clinic, Tuesdays, September 23rd to October 28th. The Youth Yoga is Tuesdays at 4:30, starting on, one day. I do not have the date of start, I have the, it's an 11-week session. It ends on December 16th. And then there's the Shuffle Board, that's September 18th to November 13th at the Rec Center. The Strength and Stability for overall fitness and building muscle strength and improving balance at the Rec Center, September 3rd to October 8th. And there is a new open jam at the Phoenixville Rec Center, which is the, it's a group for anyone who loves music and instruments, and if you're the first time or a seasoned pro, it's a supportive environment to practice. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Carmonito with Tree Advisory Commission.
Yes, Mr. President, Tree Advisory Commission met last week. We talked about our fall plantings, and we selected sites and species to plant in those. So those will be going in soon. Tree Advisory Commission's planning to be at First Friday on October, the October 1st Friday, whenever that is. And they'll be doing an activity to promote interest in our trees. And our next meeting is in October. That's all.
Thank you, James. Ms. Berkeley with Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week for our September meeting. We meet every first Wednesday of the month at the Rec Center. We've had lots of visitors recently and still continue to forge forward with not only engaging with the county and state level, but, you know, the commission is continuing to make sure they're educating themselves on our ordinance and their role in that. And if we were to get a complaint, as well as making sure that they are developing their branding and awareness in the community as a resource.
And that brings us to council action referred to from committees. So we'll go back to Ms. Berkeley with Personnel and Public Safety Committee.
I don't have any specific action to report. We did make action earlier to go to full capacity for our force on the police department. I will also say that we've been having some really good talks about pedestrian safety, and we regularly check in about the open air, as well as that's the forum on which we welcome those who want to join commissions and boards, so certainly welcome visitors to that. And that is always the first Tuesday of every month.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Parks and Rec Committee, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of location for the Firebird Festival from Veterans Park to Reservoir Park on Saturday, December 13th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 10:30 PM, parts of Dayton Street and Franklin Avenue, based on police and staff review, and the Bridge and Main Parking Lot to have screens with live stream from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, conditioned upon receipt of all fees and valid certificates of insurance, namely Borough as additional insured.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. This is a big change, so we wanted to make sure we got it through on the, for full discussion for council, to just, we'll be moving, or the proposal is to move from Veterans Park to where we currently have been using to launch fireworks, is my understanding, sort of off the Dayton Street side of Reservoir Park.
Kelly, do you maybe want to?
And we do have representation from the committee, both in-house and I believe online.
We've, we can start with Kelly.
That's the correct location. Again, I'm going to apologize for my voice as well. Sickness is going around. So we, we met with the Firebird Committee probably about five, five weeks ago, six weeks ago, to talk about its current, its known location at Veterans Park. And there are some logistical issues when it comes to safety if something were to arise because there's only one entrance and exit. uh, entrance and exit. So in that meeting, we talked about a lot of options for that location. Um, talking with the committee, we have forged a very good working relationship with open communication. Um, and talking with our police department and recommend recommendations, um, from public works and police and just trying to make it as safe as possible. With that, we talked through an option of maybe going up to, um, Reservoir Park where we launch the fireworks. Um, it was something that we talked through just again, from a safety perspective, there are many options to exit. Uh, there are, um, options for pedestrians to walk there. Um, so there, it was just a different, um, volley of a, of a location. Talking through that with the committee, um, knowing that the change is happening right now, uh, we we worked through the most of the logistics that we we could, um, without experiencing something up there, uh, to this magnitude other than our fireworks. Um, so it is that location where we set off the fireworks. There is viewing, um, that can happen within that that field. Um, there would still be safety precautions when it comes to an outer ring of, uh, we use barricades and then in another ring, uh, where no, no people can come. Um, but there are different viewing sheds where it's maybe not as massive amount of people in one location with one entrance and exit. And that's the ideal thing we're trying to figure out is making sure this is the safest, um, event when you have a massive amount of people and a giant fire. Uh, I mean, that's really what we're trying to do. That's, I mean, so we talked through it. And this was the recommendation. Um, I will say, um, from staff, this was the more agreeable location than its previous location, um, from the things that I've talked about and probably many more.
I'll offer a couple of observations. We had a pretty substantive discussion in Parks and Recreation about the change. Um, uh, there will be lights on the field that would be brought in, so it will not be, um, we were kind of pitch bar, and so lights will be set up around. Um, I I don't believe that they formally picked, but there will be a a place where it'll be a lot easier to go to where the vendors are. Um, that will, that will also be accommodative. I I guess will we still be doing the shuttle buses that have been done before? Uh, is that part of the plan?
I mean, I would, from someone who has organized other events, large events, I think shuttle buses are always, um, a good thing. They can be a financial strain on it, on an event. Um, so I think that's still something that they have to decide, and if that is decided, it will be, uh, a route that is, um, picked out, uh, with the police. Uh, and that has happened, um, in the past, and we would continue to do so. Uh, with making sure that our police department is comfortable with where those, uh, routes are and where the drop off and pickup would be. Uh, for the vendors, um, I I apologize, I was actually not at the Parks and Rec meeting. Um, we talked through, uh, recommending having them in the parking lot of Reservoir Park. Because then they can also keep their vehicles near their their stuff. Um, it doesn't have to be, you know, drop off and go, drop off and find another P, uh, parking spot. There are probably some vendors that may not be able to do that, um, if there is a food truck or something along those lines. Um, there's usually support vehicles. So there's just a little bit more in the detail. Um, but however, um, that is kind of where we volleyed where that should be. Um, there was some proposed, uh, road closures, but that will be determined, uh, by police if need be. Um, that has happened before, um, with events. Uh, we we plan everything, um, but, uh, events are fluid, right? So we don't know how many people are coming. We don't know whether, we don't know all of these other things. So, uh, staff, we have opportunities to make those decisions, um, day of, or if we can forecast something, um, we we try to figure those out as best as possible.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yeah, I I have a question about, um, the neighboring properties there. Are there any, will any steps be taken to keep what traffic off those neighboring properties? Basically, the town, townhouses that, uh, back up to there, and then there are two single-family homes at the end of
I I know that.
South Street.
Um, I know that the committee did have a, um, a, a meeting with the residents. I don't know if the, if you would like to talk or, uh, someone else wants to talk about that. Uh, they have had those conversations.
If you want to just.
Sure. Happy to answer that. My name is Mary Ann Khalilhanna, and I'm a resident of Phoenixville, and I'm on the Firebird Committee. Um, we have communicated to all the neighbors around the park via email, via printed, uh, letter, and we held a public meeting at the gazebo. Um, clearly some concern from some neighbors about that very issue. Uh, we've talked with the police and, um, other, other people here in the planning committee, and we will work to cordon off areas so that, so people can't walk on the neighborhood, um, through onto the property from the park. Uh, we will do our best in communicating. We have a really robust communication plan with people who are, who follow the festival and like to attend, so we will be pushing out via our email communications and our social media to avoid public property or private property and, um, encourage public transportation if we can provide it.
So, so barriers will be erected along those properties to keep what traffic?
Along Reservoir Park where there are the residences. So if you're standing at the gazebo and looking toward the cemetery, the residents are on your right.
Yeah.
And we would put up temporary, um, you know, temporary, uh, the orange fencing along there.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is, I think, our twenty-second, twenty-third year doing this, twenty-second. So, uh, we've moved this several times, and I think each time it's been to a better location. So I, I trust staff and our emergency service personnel and professionals that if this is a better spot, uh, for all the items listed, that seems like a good evolution.
I have to sit on my hands during this one and try not to talk because I wear multiple hats, but I will say, as a Borough Council member, I was very proud of how our staff really came together on this, how they really advocated for the borough, borough assets, but then also came, you know, to the understanding that, hey, this is a community event and we want to work with these organizers. So I was very proud to be part of that and know that there are our staff and making decisions that we trust them with every day. And then as a community member and someone who's been working hard with this festival, I appreciated that flexibility while still needing to set the expectations and boundaries.
Yeah. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed. And one extension. So the motion carries seven zero one. Anything else out of Parks and Rec Committee tonight, Mr. Moore?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Move to Policy Committee with Mr. Carmenito.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, policy met this month and, uh, well, last month and discussed a number of things. So first item, I, on the agenda, I would like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-one Streets and Sidewalk.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carmenito, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Next item, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-two Saldo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the Saldo ordinance? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
And the last item, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-seven Zoning.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmenito. We'll give it to Ms. Berkeley, uh, for the second. Questions on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed. She carries eight zero.
Right. Uh, next, um, if, uh, our next policy meeting is September twenty-third, immediately following finance, which is beginning at five thirty.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Move on to Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability Committee. Mr. Weiss.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, again, forgive me for my voice. Uh, it's going, uh, as the, as the evening goes on. Uh, lots going on in I T T S, uh, lots of exciting things. I believe last time we already had the news of our five hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh, grant aw- award that we received to, uh, put a solar installation, a hefty solar installation up on the Rec Center. Um, other than that, uh, lots of projects moving forward, lots of exciting things, but no specific action to report. Our next meeting is on the sixteenth, one week from tonight at seven P M., and we love guests.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And we'll move to Finance Committee with Ms. Dugan.
There's nothing else on the, the, that wasn't already covered.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Uh, yeah, so, sorry, one correction. Infrastructure will be immediately following Parks and Rec. So if Parks and Rec finishes early, infrastructure will start immediately following Parks and Rec.
I'll internalize that someday. But yes, thank you, thank you.
And then, as Mr. Carmenito mentioned, policy immediately follows finance, so. One minor note for your upcoming calendars. So that concludes our updates from, uh, council action. We'll move into the second and final round of public comment. If you weren't joining us at the very beginning, uh, those joining us on the Zoom platform, if you'd like to, if you would like to make comment to the, uh, council, please raise your hand digitally on the Zoom platform. Uh, a member of our staff will work through that list, uh, announce your name on your microphone, and you'll be able to make comment to council and the public. And then any members joining us here in council chambers, if you'd like to walk up to the podium, we do ask that you sign into the paper sheet that's available on the podium and provide your name and address for the purpose of the minutes. And then we do ask for you to state your name and whether you are a town, uh, borough resident or, uh, borough business owner. So our second and final round of public participation.
Good evening. My name's Diana Sinserpino, and I'm a resident of Phoenixville. I live on the north side of Phoenixville. Um, I've heard all of the discussions around the park and the town, and I I do think that it's a great idea. Um, my bigger concerns, I have some safety concerns living on the north side that I think need to be addressed. Um, where I live is on Route one thirteen, which is Fremont Street. However, my access to my home is on the backside, which is Dayton Street. Our section of Dayton Street is a one-way street, which is not always followed by everyone, unfortunately, which creates issues, but we only have nine residents that are impacted by this. We tried to get out onto one thirteen from Dayton Street, but the hill that comes up over there, the people fly. I have followed police officers, no offense. They have, they are speeding just as much as everybody else that comes one thirteen. When it hits twenty-five, the people are not following it. I have literally gone the long way around to make sure that people slow down going through that section. I'm happy that I don't have small children anymore at home because it's just not safe. In addition, if I need to go the opposite direction on one thirteen, I have to pull out to one thirteen and then try to make a right onto Grant Street, hoping that nobody is going to come through my rear end of my car. So we've had our front fence taken out because of the speeders, and we've had so many accidents where people going around that have taken out other, you know, they've taken out the telephone poles. So that's a constant concern for us as residents. We're the only ones who can't go the opposite direction. We've had people who've done it, and of course, they get ticketed, but nobody else seems to get caught. So, um, that needs to be addressed as well as the former, well, I guess it's still technically the Santa Anna American Italian Club. There is a ten-foot hole that is literally fenced by a snow fence. Why? Anybody who has a pool has to have a fence to prevent any accidents, but they have a ten-foot, ten-foot hole in the ground. Nobody has done anything about it, and it's been how many years since that happened? So, um, I think that's being completely ignored. Um, lastly, the Phoenixville Inside Out, I think it's great. I can't participate because I don't have any parking. I have a health issue, so I can't walk it. Those sidewalks and everything are difficult for me to get all the way down there. And that's fine. If I have to, I do park at the, uh, Holy Ghost Church. But what I will say is that as a resident of the north side, continuing to close part of Main Street as well on First Fridays, and now I find Main Street's going to be closed. And I found out today, driving home from work, Saturday, that's going to be closed. Our access, it's hard enough. My twenty-five minute drive to work in the morning, fifteen to twenty minutes of that is getting across town. So doing that on the weekends, on a first Friday, doing it on a Saturday, it's an, it's a terrible inconvenience, and I do think that it's a safety issue. We had a three-alarm fire not that long ago. There were fifteen fire trucks literally up and down my street and Dayton Street. I did reach out to the fire chief, questioning, how safe is that really? The response that I got was, we can move barricades easily. All of the surrounding townships knew the road closures, and I get that. That doesn't negate the traffic backlog that occurs. So how quickly are those fire trucks getting there? So those are my concerns, and I really would appreciate any way that you guys can address that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Diane.
My name is Sally Fink, and I live on Fremont Street next door there. And I want to talk about going out on one thirteen. I had made a call to the Borough Police about getting out there. I've almost got hit three times pulling out on one thirteen in the morning. And not only do you have to, I have to go the other way on one thirteen towards Forest Ward to go to work. Not only do you have to pull out once, you have to go around the block and out the other side and come down to one thirteen again and pull out again onto one thirteen. I just think it's very dangerous. And when I got, I did get stopped, and the officer told me, if you keep, if you go up the street, you could get a head-on collision. Well, if I go out one thirteen, I could get hit right in my side, on my driver's side, because they come flying over that hill, and you can't see. They come right over the top right before you're going to pull out. I've, I've almost got hit, at least I I'd say ten times. Whether they want to put a light up there or have somebody direct traffic there in the morning, it's, it's really tough to get out. If you live over there, you know, you'll know that. And to do it once, okay, but then to have to go around the block to get out onto one thirteen again, because you can't make a left turn, I have to go all the way around the block to get out that other street. So you're doing it twice. So that, that's all I have, just to reiterate that.
Thank you, Sally.
John McPhee. And, um, thank you, uh, for your support of the square at Main and Bridge. Uh, but the last item I would like to speak to is, as a business and building owner, I come in and out of the borough, uh, from the west, and I drive down Bridge Street multiple times a day. Uh, I know that you folks do not control the development process where the abandoned industrial building is and all of the homes that are boarded up. And I know that that's complicated, and the developer has financing issues. Uh, but the developer years ago demoed the Bartow Building. And at the very least, he has not completed the cleanup of the construction debris in that area. I drive by it multiple times every day, and it is a disgusting eyesore. I recognize that you can't force, um, the development process, but at the very least, we ought to be able to finish cleaning up the construction debris and require that to happen. We all know the old, um, falling down building of the barbecue shack. Right now, doesn't look bad because the trees that have grown wild there, the leaves hide it. But come winter time, that's a pretty serious eyesore as well. Um, I've said over and over again to people, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. Uh, and I've, and I've actually heard that one is, uh, been filed. Uh, if there's anything that the borough could do to at least finish, force the cleanup of the construction debris, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. You know one else in council chambers? We'll take a moment to move over to Zoom platform. Uh, we'll come back to the council, just, uh, so Ms. Logan can.
Go ahead, Ms. Ortiz.
Uh, hello, this is Katie Ortiz again. Um, I'm speaking as a resident of the north side specifically. Uh, I would like to agree with my. I would like to agree with my fellow north side resident that when Main Street specifically is shut down for First Fridays, it does create a lot of traffic issues. On my end, last week, my husband was coming home from work. He forgot about First Friday because it's once every four weeks. We know theoretically when it is, but it's not always on the forefront of our minds. And I was actually checking the air tag that we had in the car because I was so concerned about how long it was taking him to get home. And when he came home, he said, if I had remembered that Main Street was going to be shut down, I would have taken a different route. But because of things being closed off and the additional traffic, it took him an extra 20 minutes to get home. So even something like having detour signs or similar signage as what's up by Reeves Park to indicate that Bridge Street would be closed, having that set up for First Friday would also be extremely helpful for us residents on the north side. And I'd also like to point out, I take a lot of walks. I love meeting my neighbors. There are quite a few sides of the sidewalk and like the ramps leading onto the sidewalk that are in horrible shape. I walk with my son who's in a stroller, and sometimes it takes me a couple minutes to get the wheels unstuck. But I think the most egregious one is when you are crossing up North Main Street to the intersection of High Street at Vanderslice Street, the ramp that leads to go down leads basically into traffic. It is not angled towards where the rest of the sideways follows through that intersection. And so I've passed other parents with strollers, since it's such a highly residential area up here, where we're trying to look both ways and also make sure we're not walking with our little ones directly into traffic. So I know that there are a lot of sidewalks that have been fixed recently, and I would encourage that one specifically to be one that gets looked at, especially since people speed there, and it's a huge issue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. No other hands on the Zoom platform. We'll come back to council chambers for any other public comments tonight.
Hello, I'm Alice Saragian, 68 Pennsylvania Avenue. Borough Council, first off, thank you. Thank you very much for any good and beneficial projects being done in Phoenixville and beautifying the area. This is a follow-up from the August meeting. With the help of a friend, I have printouts of the USA Anley Civil Peacetime Flag. This is the American Peacetime Flag. It's available on Amazon. Our old Stars and Stripes that we fly under now is, of course, our American flag. It is the USA wartime flag. If Phoenixville begins to fly this beautiful historical flag along with the old Stars and Stripes, we can begin a new and honorable tradition, which might spread throughout other Pennsylvania towns. The peacetime flag is a symbol of unity, hope, and peace, and the Lord only gives true hope and peace. Proverbs 13:12 says, "Hope deferred maketh the heart sick, but when the desire cometh, it is a tree of life." We all need encouragement, hope, and peace in our lives, in America and the world. When we pretend that there is no such thing as right and wrong, good and bad, this will inevitably lead to the proliferation of evil, and it has. That last quote is from Matthew Kelly's book, Life is Messy. Council, please replace the homosexual flag flying out here at the municipal building with the honorable American Civil Peacetime Flag. Wouldn't you say that it is long overdue? Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you, Alice. Any other comments tonight during the second and final round of public comment?
Thank you, City Council, if I may. A concern came to mind.
Can you please state your name and whether you are a resident or business owner of the borough?
Gladly. My name is Craig Moritz. I am a resident of a borough. I did that before, but I, so I thought.
Yeah, it helps with the minutes.
They have carried over. There was, in, in this long discussion about the parking business, it was mentioned that we were counting on overflow parking needs being taken care of by religious organizations. And I find this troublesome. This is not a good plan, nor should it be part of a plan. And also that the funds collected for these, for this parking service, they pay no taxes. So just a thought, and something that should definitely be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Greg. See no other public comment on the Zoom platform and no other folks at our podium. We'll close the second and final round of public participation. Move on to Section 15, which is Communications and Council Participation.
Mr. President, I did have one thing I wanted to mention that I forgot about. Over the weekend, myself and other members of the civil service did get to participate in the testing for our fire. I think everyone that came out, it was a great experience. It's the second time we've done that now that we're starting to move towards our goal of expanding the fire department. And I think the chief and other members of the civil service that were out there, we're excited to, to see how this all plays out.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. And then just two items that I wanted to note. Next door, you'll notice that there are large excavator equipment. I do commend staff and all of our consultants on working towards this project, which is going to be the home of the Phoenix Wheel. If you've not been in one of our previous meetings, that will be the, you know, the predecessor of the Ferris Wheel will be housed, will have its new home next door. So it's exciting to see the excavation work already there. And then that's working in conjunction with the, the borough staff installing or doing most of the clearing work on the new trail. So not only is there a, the Phoenix Wheel installation going in next door, but a new trail segment will connect you from Borough Hall down to the firehouse on Paradise Street. So some exciting work going on right outside Borough Hall building here. So any other comments or updates from council tonight? Okay, seeing none. The final thing on our agenda, well, in our packets are staff reports. And then the final item on our agenda, we always list our upcoming meetings and our monthly update and appreciation of all of our staff here at Phoenixville Borough. We like to commend the service anniversaries for the month of September, marking 46 years of service. We have Liz Wakely, who's been with our police department for 19 years. Andrew Brown has been with our police department for 11 years. Alex Keefe has been in water distribution for six years now. Tyrone Taylor has been serving the sanitation department. Anne Watkins has been in Parks and Rec for three years already. And Eric Johnson has been down at our wastewater treatment plant for the last two years. So I do commend our staff. It takes 150 full-time staffers to make this community run, as well as it does, council would not be able to do what it does without the support of our dedicated borough staffers. So with that, our agenda is complete, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The meeting is adjourned at 9:01. Have a great night. We'll see you next month.